Sixteenth, 2023, a meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, noting the presence of all three board members. And I'm going to ask Mr. Nestor to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to start with a few comments this morning. First, I'd like to announce that SEPTA is redesigning their bus network. This project, called Bus Revolution, is focused on delivering an easier-to-use, more convenient, and more reliable best network informed by its riders. This is especially important for underserved communities where bus transportation is the foundation of their public transportation. This project began in 2021 and is due to be completed in 2024. New changes will address plummeting ridership and shifting service to high-demand areas. SEPTA released its initial draft network in October 2022, and after receiving thousands of comments, they are ready to show their updated draft network during a webinar on Monday, March 20, 2023, at 6:30 p.m. And that's March 20 at 6:30 p.m. The first half of the meeting will feature a presentation on the updates, and the second half will be reserved for Q&amp;A. And to register for this meeting, you can visit their blog at www.isptaphilly.com. At that blog. So if you're interested in participating, learning about the redesign, this is your opportunity to do so. On Monday this week, we had a ribbon-cutting for the Chester Valley Trail Extension. As a Commissioner, I continue to be an advocate of our decades-long effort to build out the county's trail network. We regularly invest county funds for the further development and maintenance of the county's primary trail network. And as I said on Monday, we celebrated the ribbon-cutting of the Chester Valley Trail Extension, which has been a long time coming. But the completion of this extension further expands and connects the vitally important regional circuit trails network. The significance of completing this nearly four-mile gap in the Chester Valley Trail cannot be overstated. It has transformed the ability to recreate and commute between Chester County and points throughout Montgomery County. In fact, as we continue to build out our trail network in the years to come, more and more destinations and transportation alternatives will become available to our residents. The Chester Valley Trail now extends east and north through Montgomery County to make its connection to the Schuylkill River Trail in Narstown. And now that it is complete, trail users can ride and walk as far north as Green Lane Park and as far east as Philadelphia. And once the Schuylkill River Trail Connector in Lower Pottstown Township is completed, the SRT will extend uninterrupted as far west as Bird's Borough in Berks County. So I want to recognize the efforts of our planning commission and the construction team led by Alan Myers and managed by JPC Associates and our engineers, Bull Smith Associates, to advance this project and make it a reality. I'd also like to acknowledge the Federal Highway Administration and its ongoing funding support of this project through the Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Improvement Program, known as CMAC. Without this funding and the local administrative support of our partners at PennDOT, completing this project would not have been possible. And also, please stay tuned for updates about the Montgomery County Seventh Annual Trail Challenge, which will begin on April 29. And this year, for the first time in a while, Chester Valley Trail will be a part of that challenge. And finally, I want to announce our Way to Go Monco March winners. Open to all county employees, the Way to Go Monco program encourages employees to nominate their colleagues for going above and beyond. To date, more than 170 county employees have submitted nominations singing the praises of their coworkers. Each month, we draw five employees from the list of nominations to win $150 after taxes in their paycheck to recognize them for their work. And this month, I'm pleased to announce the filing five winners. Lisa Noker with our purchasing department, who continually goes above and beyond to support our county departments, and she does so with the utmost professionalism and kindness. Lisa was instrumental with the implementation of INFO to help ensure a smooth transition for our end-users. Lisa is someone whose knowledge is trusted and can always be depended upon. Mary Ann McFarland with our Health and Human Services Office of Community Connections, works tirelessly to make sure operations are running smoothly, and she always goes above and beyond to help all HHS staff and county residents who come to the Human Services Center. Leitha Kaminsky, who has worked 22 years with our Health and Human Services Office of Children and Youth, is a dedicated caseworker who genuinely cares for her case families, going above and beyond for her families and putting in extra hours. Leitha is a strong advocate for her clients and an invaluable asset to the department. Christine Adams with the Sheriff's Office always goes above and beyond for the people she helps. She answers numerous questions and provides additional information to help guide constituents, plaintiffs, defendants, attorneys, and third-party purchasers through the sheriff's sale process. She offers her time willingly and is flexible and eager to assist with multiple other duties within the office. And finally, Patience Clemmons with our District Court 38124, that serves several townships and boroughs in the county, goes above and beyond as a senior clerk. Her knowledge of the courts and all operations continues to be an asset to our team. So congratulations to all of our winners. We will be reaching out to you with an email with more details. And as a reminder to our employees, that nominations remain open, and you can visit the employee corner to fill out the nomination form.
Great.
Mr. Winder?
Good morning, everyone. First, I would be honored to acknowledge that March is Women's History Month, so I'm proud to stand on the shoulders of many who have come before me. This month, we recognize the contributions women have made across the United States and the specific achievements women have made over the course of America's history in a variety of fields. The 2023 Women's History Month theme is "Celebrating Women Who Tell Our Stories." This theme encourages the recognition of women, past and present, who have been active in all forms of media and storytelling, including print, radio, TV, stage, the list goes on. The timely theme honors women in every community who have devoted their lives and talents to producing art, pursuing truth, and reflecting the human condition decade after decade. These include authors, songwriters, scholars, playwrights, performers, and grandmothers throughout time. Women have long been instrumental in passing on our heritage in word and in print to communicate the lessons of those who came before us. The county continues to support women in our communities through direct investment and support. The Montgomery County Recovery Office is responsible for managing the county's $161 million in pandemic recovery funds. Our goal is to support the health, social, and economic well-being of our residents, address racial and other disparities, and serve people hardest-hit during the COVID-19 pandemic. Many of the projects and ideas we need, we see a need for in communities, both directly and indirectly, provides support to women while also strengthening our social safety net. Right now, our grant program focused on minority women and veteran-owned businesses is actively awarding grants to support businesses in Pottstown and Narstown negatively affected by COVID-19. To date, we have awarded 78 small businesses, many women-owned, as a part of this program. I encourage any minority, women, and veteran-owned businesses to apply on our website at www.moncopa.org/recoveryoffice. Technical assistance is also available by calling or texting (610) 750-8200. This Women's History Month, I am proud to reaffirm the county's commitment to implementing policies and programs to lift up all women. As a government, we have led by example as a model employer for women. We have implemented paid leave for women and their partners and mandated that all of our employees are paid a living wage at at least $15 an hour. The county is also updating its compensation study this year to ensure pay equity across county departments as a part of our larger diversity, equity, and inclusion goals. As one of the few women to serve on the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, I think there's been seven, I am proud of the progress we have made in these areas, and I am committed to continuing to make positive change for women in our community. Next up, I wanted to talk a little bit about the Career Fair and Jobseeker Resources. I would like to announce that the county departments, as well as the private sector, employers will be participating in an upcoming career fair. The Chamber of Commerce for Greater Montgomery County is hosting a job fair Thursday, April 13, at the Plymouth Beatty Mall, from noon to 5:00. There will be businesses from across Montgomery County representing multiple industries and occupations, and a list of participating businesses and their openings can be found on the Chamber's website. This event is being planned in coordination with PA Career Link, Montgomery County. Any resident seeking a job or employer-seeking trained workers is encouraged to reach out to Career Link at (610) 270-3429 or by visiting their website. All Career Link services are provided at no cost to job seekers. And finally, I'd like to give a plug for working for county government. Our employees are the most important asset and the lifeblood of our county operations. With that in mind, we take pride in offering an affordable, quality benefits package that helps to protect and support our employees and their families. I encourage everyone to take a look at open positions on our website at www.moncopa.org/jobs. And that concludes my comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Gail? Good morning, everyone. I'd also like to recognize March as Irish-American Heritage Month. As we celebrate Irish-American Heritage Month, we honor the journey and contributions of early immigrant Irish-Americans who escaped the Great Famine and carried the spirit and memory of Ireland with them here to the United States. And my great-grandmother is one of those Irish immigrants that lived out her dream of becoming American, and the stories I hear pass along the generations in my family is very special, and I know it's special for many others. Despite facing discrimination and poverty on their arrival, they embrace the American dream and, over decades, helped to expand the middle class by becoming teachers, firefighters, police officers, labor leaders, farmers, and business owners, in addition to serving the country and the armed services as well. With strength, courage, and wit, and creativity, Irish-Americans have thrived and left a mark on our literature, arts, civic, and political institutions, and our communities. I hope you join us in recognizing the many ways Irish-Americans have enriched our communities throughout the years. No better way to do that than tomorrow with St. Patrick's Day. I wish you all a very happy St. Patrick's Day. And this past weekend on Saturday, we had the annual St. Patrick's Day Parade in Conshohocken. It was very well-attended. I saw Commissioner Winder there on the parade route. And I'd like to give a special thanks to all the public safety personnel, the first responders that worked hard to make sure that event went smoothly and that the community enjoyed and had fun. And being half-Irish, half-Italian, Gail was my Irish side, my other half is Italian. I mentioned Conshohocken. I'd also like to give a special shout-out to the Conshohocken Italian Bakery that celebrates their 50th anniversary being in business. That's a landmark to Conshohocken in this area, and they contribute and make many great contributions to our community as well. So I want to make sure I got the Italian side in there as well. But happy St. Patrick's Day to all those celebrating.
Now you got me thinking about roles from there.
Yeah, I apologize.
Thank you. We're going to move on to announcements and presentations now, and we'll start with Tamara Williams, our Director of Health and Human Services, to talk about our Homelessness Task Force, which we're announcing today.
Good morning. You can go to the next one. Okay. Okay. All right, there we go. So I wanted to talk this morning about establishing a homelessness task force for the county. The county has annually funded programs to address homelessness for many years now through grants such as human services and community development block grants and ARPA. In 2022, the county provided funding totaling over $22 million for programs such as rapid rehousing, emergency shelter operations, new emergency shelter construction, homeless outreach services, street medicine, and emergency hoteling. Next slide. In addition to funding, the county has supported efforts to end homelessness through the creation of nationally recognized programs such as Your Way Home. And this slide here shows that we have made some progress over the past 10 years or so with regard to homelessness. The implementation of Your Way Home is that dark-blue vertical line, and as you can see that we are trending down in the number of people found to be homeless during the point-in-time counts or PIT counts, with the exception of an uptick in 2022 after Hurricane Ida. So we are making strides, and so one might ask, why now? Why implement a homeless task force now? Next slide. Despite significant county support for initiatives that address homelessness and some nice trends showing decreases in the PIT counts, we need to think proactively and take some preventive measures in anticipation of the impact of certain economic shifts related to things such as the end of the public health emergency, which has prevented many people from falling into poverty, as well as increases in the cost of goods, including food. Now is also an opportune time, given the unprecedented amounts of funding, to support COVID recovery efforts. So we want to maximize this period of financial resources that we have available to us now, and those dollars will be even more effective if we have a unified plan. And then lastly, to answer the question of why now, despite the gains that we have made in decreasing the number of people experiencing homelessness, we continue to struggle with the availability of certain resources that have been shown to be key to functionally ending homelessness. Next slide. And at the risk of slightly oversimplifying the problem, there essentially is a gap between the number of people who are living outside because they are homeless and the number of housing options that are available. So while there are several other resources that are key to effectively addressing homelessness, housing is one of those critical resources. So for example, there were 329 homeless individuals identified in the last PIT count, but there are only 162 emergency shelter beds across the county. Additionally, while the area median income for the county is just over $102,000, most individuals who are homeless have an AMI of about 34% or less, but all deeply subsidized housing units are full. And though, again, there were 329 people found to be homeless in January, there are only 119 permanent supportive housing units, and those are full as well. Next slide. So we're looking to establish a task force to address some of these gaps, as well as a variety of other potential things that we can do to support efforts related to homelessness. Next slide. This group will be time-limited and will take a solution-oriented approach, informed by current data and outcomes of existing interventions. So we want to look at county-wide data, as well as examining the outcomes of programs that are currently funding to address homelessness. We'll also review some other evidence-based interventions, especially those that address the whole person. Next slide. And as I mentioned, housing is not the sole solution to addressing homelessness. It's really useful to think about the components that produce lasting change and self-sufficiency as a three-legged stool. So effective whole-person intervention programs address sustainable paid employment, housing, as well as supportive services such as behavioral health treatment, case management, and social services, for example. Next slide. One of the strategies that the task force will use is called PDSA or Plan Do Study Act, and we'll use this because of the time-limited nature of the task force. So we'll use this to agree upon a definition of success, to prioritize outcomes, to identify feasible interventions that are doable within a short period of time, and implement them. And then our goal is to quickly cycle through a process of monitoring those outcomes, making adjustments as needed, and then if there are positive outcomes, make plans to replicate and expand. And in terms of outcomes, there are no shortage of tasks, from housing and employment to cleanup and trash removal, and this group will be tasked with prioritizing goals and mobilizing resources to support them. Next slide. And in terms of the task force membership, it's important that the task force include representation from all of those who are critical to not just ending immediate homelessness but preventing it from occurring and preventing recurrence once individuals have exited from homelessness. This means ensuring that we have representation from providers of behavioral health services and homeless services, that there is representation from the county, landlords, developers, schools, court programs, housing, local officials, municipalities, faith-based organizations, and those with lived experience. And so we are looking to have our first meeting in April, and we will also be seeking some volunteers through an application process that will soon be on our county website, so that will be forthcoming. Next slide. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, for all the work that you've been doing on this. And I always say that this is an invisible issue for a lot of people in Montgomery County, but it's really a county-wide issue, and we need county-wide solutions. And when I say county-wide, I don't just mean Montgomery County. So we will be inviting specific municipalities to participate and some of our elected officials, but we are looking for people from the community as well to come forward. 329, it's down, but it's still too much, and we know that there's more than that out there. So thank you for your work, and you know, part of the urgency is because I want something done before I'm done. So I know you feel that as well.
We'll try. We'll do our best.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. All right. It is National Social Work Month, and we have Bill Carroll here to talk about that. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners.
Anything else as well?
We're here to celebrate National Social Work Month. National Social Work Month gives us the opportunity to thank the social workers of Montgomery County for the important and often unseen work that they do. Each year, the National Association of Social Workers chooses a theme to capture the essence of the profession and the work. This year, "Social Workers Break Barriers" speaks to the work that the staff, that the Office of Children and Youth does to carry out their work every single day. In responding to concerns of Child Abuse Syndical Act, our caseworkers engage with families to identify the underlying causes that prevent them from thriving. We substitute, we help to break down these barriers such as untreated mental health, substance abuse issues, unstable housing, various trauma, and isolation by connecting families with services and helping them access certain basic needs for families to thrive.
One of the biggest barriers we face in working with families is their fear of becoming involved with the child welfare system. To break this barrier, we work alongside families to build trust. We collaborate with families in creating their own solutions. We build on families' own strengths and natural supports to keep children safe and help them to reach their full potential. As we celebrate Social Work Month, we would like to recognize our dedicated and hard-working social workers and support staff for the excellent work they do day in and day out. Also, we would like to thank you, the Montgomery County Commissioners, for your continued and ongoing support as we look to achieve brighter futures for all Montgomery County children and families.
Thank you both for being here today. I often say the Office of Children and Youth has one of the hardest jobs in the county and also one of the most important. And we're grateful to all of our social workers here in the county, in your office, and throughout the county, and we're happy to recognize this month. But thank you for being here and sharing with us. Thank you.
And I would just say, as a mom of a two-and-a-half-year-old, recognizing the challenges that your social workers face in supporting families, and really want to just say thank you to them because our children are our future, and I know the work they do is supercritical to ensuring that our children are protected from, you know, any issues that they might face. So thank you, and thank you for your comments.
And I too am grateful for all your hard work each day, and please pass along to your colleagues. We appreciate the important and critical work they do to serve families during times of need here in Montgomery County. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Nestor, our Chief Public Defender here, to talk about Public Defender Day.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Adam Vice Chair, Commissioner Gail. Saturday is Public Defender Day. Over 60 years ago, no one could have suspected that man sitting alone in his jail cell in Florida with nothing but paper and pencil could forever change the vast machinery of the American legal system, but that's exactly what he did. In 1961, Clarence Gideon was arrested for breaking into a pool hall in Panama City, Florida. He could not afford a lawyer, and the Florida courts refused to provide him with court-appointed counsel. He was convicted and sentenced to five years in prison. From his jail cell, Mr. Gideon himself hand-wrote a letter on Florida Department of Corrections Stationery to the United States Supreme Court. The court eventually heard his petition, and 60 years ago this Saturday, in a unanimous decision, the Supreme Court reversed his conviction and stated, "In our adversarial system of criminal justice, any person hailed into court who was too poor to hire a lawyer cannot be assured a fair trial unless counsel is provided for him. Lawyers in criminal courts are necessities, not luxuries." His case was remanded for a new trial where he was represented by counsel. At that trial, Mr. Gideon was found not guilty. Because of his lack of an access to an attorney the first time, Gideon served two years in prison for a crime he did not commit. Gideon ended our nation's long history of justice only for those who can afford it. His case ensured that justice would not be something reserved only for the wealthy. It must be accessible to everyone, regardless of income or economic status. The Montgomery County Public Defender's Office, we are lawyers, support staff, paralegals, investigators, and social services advocates. We represent adults and children. Our clients are often homeless. They are individuals struggling with serious mental illness, addiction, challenges of aging. They are often survivors of personal trauma, marginalization, or poverty. We are client-centered, and we represent clients both in and out of the courtroom. We are guided by three principles. The first is to engage and educate and divert people from the criminal justice system to begin with. Second is to be the absolute best trial lawyers we can be. And third, when their cases are over, is to provide our clients with the tools they need to succeed in order to reduce the risk of recidivism. We've hosted food drives, employment fairs, voter-registration efforts, and events to connect our clients and our community with all the support services and resources that Montgomery County has to offer. Our twice-monthly virtual expungement clinics are perhaps the most vital and most popular program that we do. We are proud of the work that we do, and we thank you, the county commissioners, for your ongoing and steadfast support for our office. Clarence Gideon's gravestone is inscribed with the following epitaph: "Each era finds an improvement in law for the benefit of mankind." Those words echo as a challenge to us and to future generations, not only to seek justice, but like Clarence Gideon, to leave the criminal justice system better than we founded. Thank you.
Mr. Nestor, thank you for coming each year, but thank you for the work that you do each day and your leadership in our Office of the Public Defender. Please give our thanks to all of your colleagues there, and I'm glad that you mentioned too what you all do outside of the courtroom, which seems counterintuitive until you explained there that you're trying to help people overall. The food drives, the employment drives, that our Public Defender's Office does more than represent people in the courtroom, and you explained eloquently there why. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
And I would just say, access to good legal representation should not be a case of they have, they have nots. And so really applaud you and your team for the work that you all do, day in and day out, in trying to help people in a very difficult time. And that's just the starting point, to ensure people have a second chance and make better decisions. Or, so I just want to say, I know your public defenders are overloaded and oftentimes overworked, but the work they do does not go unnoticed. Especially for me, as a member of the African-American community, really appreciate the work that you do because your work has helped a lot of us, you know, stay out, you know, out of our penitentiary. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those words.
Mr. Nestor, I admire your leadership role as Chief Public Defender, and I know you take a lot of pride in it and you work very hard. And again, please pass my appreciation along to your colleagues within the department.
Will do. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. We will now move on to public comment on matters appearing on the agenda, which is limited to two minutes, and the rules are in the back. Ms. Co. Francisco? Ms. Cofrancisco.
I have objection.
Thank you.
I have objection.
Start time, Kelly.
There's no time on objection, Ken.
Start the time, Kelly.
Don't start your crap.
You can sit down.
What do you want?
It is not your turn to speak yet. You can sit down.
I have an objection.
State your objection briefly and sit down.
Okay, Maureen. Don't be that nasty like you are, okay?
State your objection.
I am talking about the...
Sit down.
No, I can't, because I have an objection.
State the objection.
She's telling me to state the objection. I'm trying to. Brandy, I appreciate that you're here, but please don't interrupt. Whenever Mr. Stein interrupts somebody and says that it's not permissible to speak about a subject, he is wrong, and so are you. And I have case law to back me up. The case is 221 CV 04336-GELGEP.
Your objection is noted. You can sit down.
You didn't... What did you note? Did you take down the case number?
You're going to provide it to Kelly.
What did you note?
Do you want me to give it to Kelly for you?
No, I will do it. Thank you. You're wrong, Maureen, and so is Stein.
Please sit down.
And also, Stein is now the second felon who sits up there besides the rapist.
Please sit down.
Ms. Cofrancisco.
Sure. We'll start with public comment on agenda items. So first, we have David Morgan, who has agenda item comment on items K-13, 16, J, G, 7, and 8.
Good morning. I'm David Morgan from Ambler. And relating to K-13 and K-16, they're amendments, and yet one is $4.6 million. So to raise costs that far is concerning to a taxpayer, also to the $1.8 million. So I just am monitoring these cost increases. Then J-6 through 8 relate to a concern to clarify exactly what is being set for RFP here, because it seems a little vague, the Communications Relation Assistance, as well as 8 saying Community Engagement Facilitation Services. A bridge is a bridge. We know what that is, but what this project is, is really helpful maybe to say why it's there or what it addresses really briefly, would help us in the public. As for 7, that has some promise because of facilities to investigate in North. I'm very interested in that. So I think that's good to know. And then related to the Aerie Street property, which is a agenda item from before, which is addressed by Mr. Saltisiak, the purpose of that seems to be is for public defenders, if I recall right. Isn't the large facility behind the courthouse for public defenders, and isn't that a vast area? And perhaps this building could be considered for homeless shelter or something like that, or something else which would be opening up more use to help others.
Next, we have for agenda item public comment, Pauline Braccio on items D, E, and F.
Mr. Nestor gave a really nice speech up here, but the hypocrisy is just unimaginable. When I was unlawfully arrested, Judge Cheryl Austin would not provide me with an attorney. And I went to the Public Defender's Office, and they would do nothing to help me. So maybe I'm not the right description of whom they help, but I was denied, and Cheryl Austin ran a kangaroo court, which is a real thing. She would not let me direct-examine my witnesses. Even the people that I subpoenaed, Maureen came in and just knocked them all out. And same thing with you, Joe. You showed up, and then Stein talked to you, and you walked away. You could have helped me that day, but you did not. So, and again, the thing about the public comment rules, even if you don't have them read, they're still here, and I can still object to them. And the fact that Maureen doesn't even know the rules, she doesn't know...
Thank you. Your time is up.
Oh, I don't think I had... Did you take off time for me?
No. That was a full two minutes. Now your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you.
And yours will be, too. And please tell Stein that he is now a felon. Thank you.
Ms. Cofrancisco.
Next, we will go to general public comment. So we have Sherri Johnson.
Thanks for being here, and I'm the one who's been sending you emails about cleaning up the Schuylkill River Trail and hopefully getting help for our homeless, and I'm thrilled to hear about the task force, and I hope to work with you. My name is Sherri Johnson. I live in West Norrington, and I live on the Schuylkill Trail. I'm on my bike constantly. In January, we had a warm day. I got on my bike. I saw the homeless situation, since all the leaves are gone, trash everywhere. So today, I'm here to address that. I've been active on social media to alert my neighbors. I'm new at being an advocate, so I reached out to a gentleman in Pottstown, and he sent me this letter, so I'll read it as much as I can. He says, "I'm writing to support Sherri Johnson. Sherri contacted me to obtain advice and support for cleaning up the trash." Sherri has been unable to get a commitment from PICO, although Mr. Cranich of PICO is working on getting their property picked up. A lot of the trash is there. Mr... This is Mr. Green, who I'm speaking of, of Pottstown. He says, "We are currently struggling with a serious threat, also in Pottstown, for health and safety. Large amounts of trash, including human body waste, food waste, discarded tents, and tarps, are popping up around the encampment, and also Norfolk Southern Railroad is who they are dealing with. We have PICO to help us here, I hope." So I'm just, I just want to bring awareness to the cleanup. I want to clean up on April, a date in April, April 14th. I need permission from the county, and it sounds like I already got that, from Ms. O'Malley here, so I'm grateful for that. I have a group that wants to clean up along the Schuylkill Trail between Buttonwood and Hawes Avenue. There's another group that day cleaning up at Riverfront Park. So thanks for your support, and I will continue to work on my other job, volunteering wherever I can to get our homeless out off the streets, so I look forward to working with the task force. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, thanks for coming out this morning.
My pleasure.
And thank you for your emails, and please let me know about April 14th, what time, and I will certainly try to be there to help if I can.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Nice to meet you all.
Ms. Johnson, I just have a quick question for you.
Yes.
The area where you see this concern, that's between Buttonwood and Hawes Avenue?
That's the worst of it.
And what about, like, the Port Indian section of West Norrington? Is that where you live?
Port Indian, yes. That's another area. The whole Schuylkill Trail riverbanks need to be cleaned. I am working with PICO, but I have not, I have no commitment from PICO yet. We're going to need heavy equipment. My, I don't want to drive the homeless away from there because they have nowhere to go right now, but we do need to clean up around them.
Including Port Indian.
Including Port Indian area, too. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Thank you very much.
Next, for general public comment, we have Pauline Braccio.
Pauline Braccio, Townesham Township. You have no authority to be telling the deputies to come over to me. You do not have the authority to do that. You keep violating every rule that you possibly can, and it really would behoove you, Maureen, to learn the sunshine law. Mr. Stein doesn't even know it yet. He is also, as I've said before, a felon because he has committed mail fraud and mail theft. And the United States Postal Service still takes that very seriously. It's a federal crime, and they know his home address, his work address, and his schedule, so please let him know that he will be picked up shortly. This is just really ridiculous with the amount of crime that goes on in this county. And also, in Townesham Township now, I understand you, Ken, help the commission to become elected to do a government study, which they really did not do a government study. There's no data in the study. And now, one of them, the leader, actually is a socialist, and he is now running for supervisor. So are you going to be helping him get elected, too, with your manipulations of the ballots? And also, on the ballot, under his name, will you put socialist? Because that is his party. So I know you're not going to answer anything because you refuse to say anything at all, probably because you just don't know the answers. But it's just really amazing to me how, at every level, whether it is county, municipality, or school board, school district, how the people have no conscience, and they don't really help the people they're supposed to be helping. And it's just, it's a degradation of our society completely. And I know you want to get the homelessness taken care of because you want something credited to you, which you do not deserve.
Next, for general public comment, we have David Morgan.
My first topic was going to be about what is Germaine. And Mr. Stein is not here, so I'd like to defer that to another meeting. But it was related to anything about the well-being of our people. Someone speaks about that. I think it's Germaine. Then, just a little point about the collection of, I think it's a great project to collect waste along our trails, but just be careful, because there could be sharp objects, truly to inspect what is being approached. Because in my hometown of Ambler, we have Plant Ambler, which is a community flower project, and so we're encouraged to pick up trash around. If you have nice flowers and trash in front of it, it doesn't quite go together. So just to take measures, dog walkers often see trash, so you have to have a bag on your hand or something like that, just to watch out that it's safe. And so that's all I have to say. I'm just trying to save time today because I went a little over talking about life the last time.
Next, for general public comment, we have Monica Harrower.
Good morning. Monica Harrower, Cheltenham Township. I just wanted to bring something to the attention of the commissioners. Last summer, my daughter was in EMT training. She needed a TB test, and we had to get it done that day. We couldn't get into her doctor, so I called the county health office up at Willow Grove. And the woman I spoke to said that my daughter could not get a TB test. She either had to have showing symptoms, or if she was an immigrant. And that really bothered me, because we are residents of the county, we're taxpayers of the county, and I don't understand why she wasn't, my daughter was not eligible for county services that she needed for an EMT job. We ended up going to a private urgent care and paying out of pocket, but I, it really floored me, and I just don't understand that why the taxpayers are not given services and the county only services certain groups. So it is a concern to me, and I don't know why she was denied service.
Did you sign in? Do we have your information?
Yes.
Okay. We will have someone contact you and explain what the procedures are.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Next, for general public comment, we have Kelly Shippen.
Good morning, commissioners Lawrence, Kenneth Lawrence, and Jamila Winder. I am here again because this could happen to another family. Two weeks ago, I stood before you to remind you of my meeting with you three years ago, in which I presented documentation representing Montgomery County minority Gow and his counterpartors and my ex-attorneys taking my home from me and my family. Satan's intention was to manipulate my mind, steal my faith, but the Holy Spirit told me that the devil is a liar and my mind is sharp. Satan has gone after my family, my money, my assets, my health, my mind, and everything connected to me every single day. My faith in God, I am a faith walker and a faith talker. I want my home back. Each of us are uniquely designed and shaped to do certain things, and this is my calling from God to make others aware of the evil that exists here in Montgomery County, and it starts with you, Joe Gow, who is Satan, who has his people around me each and every day. But I have faith in God that he hears me, and he wants me to bring this to the attention. You will no longer manipulate my mind, my body, my soul, my money, and my family. I've got forty-five seconds left, and I just wanted to let you know that it will no longer, no more, you will not get away with this. You will not get away with taking my home. You will not get away manipulating my family, using my son, and using my family, and what you have done. I have all the documentation to prove every and everything that you have done. You are Satan. You are the epitome of Satan, and it will not happen to me any longer. It stops here. It stops with me. It stops with me, right here, right now. It stops. No longer will Satan manipulate my mind. No longer will he take my home. I have twelve seconds left.
You can sit down now. We understand your comment. Thank you.
Objection. She had time left. You should not show up.
It doesn't matter. God will take care of you.
Next, we'll move to our online public commenters. First, we have Deb Spence. Deb, you can unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning. Jamila, happy Women's History Month, and I'm very proud of your accomplishments, but I'd like to talk today about, one, the Small Business Grant Program for supposedly minority women, disabled, gay, all of that stuff. I am, and still was denied that grant in Pottstown. Appears as if that grant program is fraudulent. I don't know who's getting the money, but, you know, I act around, and I talk to several minorities in Pottstown who own businesses, and they haven't received those funds. The other thing is the Homeless Task Force. I did send an email to the commissioner. I am very much interested in that, considering I have housing brokerage in the borough of Pottstown, and the homeless are laid out literally in the street, in front of the businesses. But we are, we're all talking about trash, and that's the focus, to pick up the trash, pick up the trash. I don't know why that is a focus. That's the symptom of a broader condition, a disease. Trash is just a small part of it. It's the focus should be on what brought the homelessness to Pottstown and Northtown and to other areas. Homelessness is a broader topic, and trash is just a smaller part of it. Don't focus on picking up the trash. Focus on the root of the cause. Why are people sleeping in the street? And if you focus on that, that'll eliminate people sleeping in the street, and it will eliminate the trash. So thank you so much for allowing me the time to make my comment. Appreciate it.
That concludes our public comment.
Okay. We will now move on to approval of the minutes. I will make a motion to approve the March 2nd, 2023 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Minutes are approved. Moving on to resolutions, authorization of planning assistant contract renewals for Abington Township in Hatburo Borough.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. We have two of our three-year community planning assistant contracts up for renewal for, as you said, Abington Township and Hatburo Borough. Both of these contracts are the final ones in our group of year-end and year beginning renewals, and they retroactively would begin January 1st, 2023, and expire on December 31st, 2025. I'll go over the details of each one. For Abington, our work will involve completion and adoption of the township's new comprehensive plan, and following that, we will assist with plan implementation by amending the zoning and subdivision ordinances as needed and preparing recommended special studies. We're also contracted to participate in internal pre-development meetings to provide guidance on planning and land development matters. That contract will be a total cost of $90,846. We subsidize the cost to the municipalities so that the municipality's share of that contract would be $45,423 over the three years. In Hatburo Borough, the, they are contracting with us to complete a full zoning ordinance rewrite as part of ongoing comprehensive plan implementation. After the zoning work is complete, we'll assist with an update to the borough's subdivision and land development ordinance, and continue to provide assistance with recreation planning and grants and sustainability planning. That contract is total, the total cost is $77,868, with the municipal share being $38,934. Both contracts are proposed to you in resolution.
All right. Thank you, Mr. France. I will make a motion that the Montgomery County Commissioners hereby... I will make a motion that the Montgomery County Commissioners hereby approve the contracts for municipal planning assistance outlined by Mr. Scott France, and the proper county officials are hereby authorized and directed to execute the same. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Authorization to enter into an amended Monco 2040 program and implementation grant agreement with East Norton Township. Mr. France.
Yes. So you have a resolution to authorize the amendment of a funding agreement pursuant to the grant under the Monco 2040 Implementation Grant Program. This is between the county and East Norton Township, and East Norton originally made this request. I want to provide just a little more details to give context to this decision and recommendation. The original grant was authorized back in 2021 in the amount of $200,000 to encompass what we identified as Phase II improvements to the township's Stanbridge Park. This included a gazebo, walking pathways, and a solar carport. The request is to postpone the Phase II improvements and use the grant in combination with local funds to build a community center facility within the park, which was also identified in the original grant application, but as Phase III. The rationale provided by the township is based on a more immediate need to get the community center built and opened in time for potential programming later this summer and in the fall. They have a substantial amount of local funding available in the amount of approximately $725,000 to complete the project. Unfortunately, original bids were high, and use of the county's $200,000 grant for this purpose would be enough to begin construction. Phase II improvements would be completed at a later time. The 2040 Grant Review Committee, made up of planning staff, other county department heads, and members of the Planning Commission Board, reviewed the request and agreed to support recommendation of the amendment to fund Phase III with the existing grant funds. Supporting this request will result in more expedient use of the 2040 grant funds, and a desirable result will be had in the use of the funds providing for a community center facility. And finally, we do not usually support municipalities when they ask to repurpose a grant, especially if it is proposed towards an unrelated project. We may allow for modifications, which don't usually require a change to the funding agreement, such as a tightening of the scope due to cost overages or difficulty securing rights to property. Our direction is either to complete the project as is or terminate the grant and reapply for a new project. This situation is different in that the township did identify the new scope in its original application, even though it wasn't seeking funding directly for it at the time. Because the Phase III elements in the application were not transferred into the original funding agreement, it was the advice of our solicitor that we should amend the agreement if we were supportive of using the funds for Phase III, which is the recommendation that we're bringing to you today.
All right. Thank you. I will make a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to enter into an amended Monco 2040 program implementation grant agreement with East Norton Township that will include the project narrative. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment or questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. France.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Hartman.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have a presentation.
Great. Thanks, Kelly. Good morning again. Today, the Planning Commission is seeking your authorization of a proposed open space fund grant award of an amount not to exceed $221,660 to the Heritage Conservancy, a land trust for the acquisition of a conservation easement on 59.35 acres owned by Lori and Ron Barber in Lower Frederick Township. And just directing your attention to the slide on the screen, the Barber property is located where that star is, inside the circle in Lower Frederick Township. The Barber property currently consists of three parcels totaling 77.15 acres. It contains a number of improvements, including a main residence, outbuildings, as well as 62 acres of riparian woodlands, and six acres of fallow agricultural fields. The property is located directly across the street from Lower Frederick's 22-acre Colonial Park, and is directly across the Perkyomen Creek from Upper Salford's 39-acre Romer Park, as well as the county's Perkyomen Trail. Next slide, please. On the left-hand side of the screen, at the top of the slide, is the Barber property in purple. To the left of that is the 22-acre Colonial Park in green. And to the right of it, you can see the Perkyomen Creek that runs from the top of the slide down to the lower right. And on the other side of the Perkyomen Creek is Romer Park and as well as the Perkyomen Trail, which runs immediately adjacent to the Perkyomen Creek. On the right-hand side of the slide, that shows the entirety of the 77 acres. And the focus today is the Barber property portion. That's the 62 acres that you see in green with the asterisk in it. Lower Frederick's Open Space Board has identified the Barber property as their number-one preservation project within the township. The Barbers intend to transfer ownership of a 14-point acre parcel to their son. That's the pink-orange color at the top of the right-hand slide, under the condition that his land must also be placed under a separate conservation easement sometime in the future. Therefore, the focus of this funding request is the 62.35 acres that you see in green there that would remain under the ownership and control of Lori and Ron Barber. Next slide, please. The proposed conservation easement would include a 56.35-acre highest protection area, primarily covering the site's natural features, a 2.85-acre standard protection area, and a 3.15 minimal protection area. So on this slide, you can see the area that's in green is the area of highest protection. The area of standard protection is that orange brownish color that runs through the middle of the site to the right-hand side of the property. And then the minimal protection area is the yellow area where you can see most of the improvements. For the highest protection and standard protection areas, again, the green and orange colors on the slide, the Heritage Conservancy is seeking easement acquisition funding from three sources, Pennsylvania DCNR, Montgomery County, as well as Lower Frederick Township, noting that any DCNR funds that are received can only be used toward the area designated as highest protection. That's a standard policy that DCNR has. The total land acquisition and estimated project costs are $554,150 for the 2.85-acre standard protection area and the 66.35-acre area of highest protection. And to cover these expenses, the Heritage Conservancy is seeking project funding as follows. $264,000, $264,250 from DCNR. They're going to be applying for a C2P2 grant this spring. They're seeking $55,415 from Lower Frederick Township. And as I mentioned, they're seeking $221,660 from the county. On February 22nd of this year, the county's Open Space Board unanimously recommended that Montgomery County award an open space grant to the Heritage Conservancy not to exceed $221,660 toward the acquisition of the Barber Conservation Easement.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hartman. I will make a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby authorize an open space grant of $221,660 to Heritage Conservancy for the purchase of a conservation easement on the Barber property. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Are there any board comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to the vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes.
Great. The next presentation I have, Kelly, if you could pull that up, is for another open space grant request from the county. Today, we're going to be seeking your authorization of this open space grant in an amount of $500,000 to the Highlands Historical Society to assist in its fee acquisition of a portion of the property located at 7111 Sheaf Lane in White Marsh Township. Directing your attention to the slide on the screen, again, in the circle with the star, you can see the location of the property on Sheaf Lane in White Marsh Township. Next slide, please. The project area currently consists of three tax parcels totaling approximately 51 acres. So looking at this slide, you may have to skimp a little bit because the writing is small. But you can see Lot 3 on the right-hand side of the colored areas in yellow. That's about 15 acres. Lot 4 is shown in red. That's the property. It's 711 Sheaf Lane. And Lot 5, then that's 29 acres. And Lot 5 is below Lot 3 in yellow, and that's seven acres. The current 40-acre Highlands property is located to the south of Lot 4. That's the area in blue with the label Highlands on it, and consists of a historic mansion and formal gardens where public and private events are hosted. Wisackon Trails 109-acre Willow Lake Farm Preserve is located to the north, and that's the large area in green at the top of the red area. Next slide, please. Currently, a developer has submitted plans to develop Lots 3, 4, and 5 with 46 single-family homes. And you can see on this slide, the majority of those homes are at the top of the property around that Loop Road. And that sits immediately below the Willow Lake Preserve located to the north that Wisackon Trails owns. And those 46 homes would be accessed by that access drive that you can see coming down through Lots 3 and 5 down to Sheaf Lane. Next slide, please. Ultimately, the Highlands desires to preserve in perpetuity the entire 29 acres currently comprising Lot 4 via conservation easement. Remembering back to that slide before, that's that large area in red. Of these 29 acres, 19 acres would be owned in fee by Highlands and reserved for perpetual public access. As currently envisioned, this outcome will be achieved through the subdivision of Lot 4 and sale of 10 of the 29 acres to conservation buyers. Lots 3 and 5 totaling 22 acres would be acquired by the adjoining neighbor to the east. Prior to these transfers, conservation easements will be placed on Lots 3, 4, and 5. The conservation easements on Lot 3 and 5 will be donated by the developer prior to sale. Each easement would have one residential right. The conservation easement on Lot 4 will be granted to White Marsh Township. One residential right, currently represented by an existing residence on Lot 4, would be permitted. So directing your attention to this slide, again, there's a lot, there's a lot going on here. But that area that was read before, is there a laser pointer here? Does this work? Okay, all right. So you remember that area that was in red, that was Lot 4. You can see that there's a large area of yellow that's inside of it right now. That is the area that would be, that area is comprised of one large private property that will not be under a conservation easement. But the 10 acres that will be carved out of Lot 4's 29 acres is within that yellow area that sits within Lot 4 exactly. The blue area that Kelly's outlining that surrounds that, the yellow area, is the remaining 19 acres of Lot 4 that would be preserved and available for public access. And again, Lots 3 and 5 would have conservation easements on them as well to protect those. So the entire 29 acres will be protected. 19 acres of those 29 acres will be publicly accessible. The 19 acres of Lot 4 owned by Highlands are remaining after the subdivision and sale of the 10 acres to conservation buyers will serve as publicly accessible open space with proposed trails to create direct connections between the Highlands' core parcel to the south and Willow Lake Farm Preserve to the north. Expanded trailhead parking is proposed for the current Highlands parcel to improve access to the trails. So going back to the map, you can see two arrows with dashed lines that connect the Highlands property in blue to the south. And you can see how they connect up into the green area that's the Wisackon Trails Preserve. So that's how the public access connection would be made. In addition to the trail network on the 19 acres of preserved and publicly accessible land, this area also hosts a diverse mature deciduous forest, open meadows, and a scenic view shed along Skipback Pike and Sheaf Lane. In the end, the preservation of Lot 4 will create nearly 170 acres of contiguous permanently preserved and publicly available open space. The proposed and connective trail system and stewardship of the site's natural features will benefit the broader county community as well as the environment. Next slide, please. From a funding standpoint, the Highlands, as I mentioned, has requested $500,000 in county open space funds to assist with the fee simple acquisition of Lot 4. The Highlands has secured a commitment of $6 million in open space funds from White Marsh Township, as well as $2 million in private donations. The Highlands also intends to submit an application to DCNR this spring for their C2P2 program, seeking $1 million to assist in the fee acquisition of Lot 4. So just running through the spreadsheet very quickly, at the top, you can see the $6 million of committed funds from White Marsh Township, the $500,000 that has been requested from the county, the $1 million that would come from, if received, from DCNR's C2P2 grant program. They anticipate receiving about $4 million in conservation sales of Lots 3 and 5, as well as portions of Lot 4. They have $2 million in donations that have been made by private donors to the Highlands Preservation Fund. And because the conservation easements on Lots 3 and 5 will be donated as opposed to purchase, they anticipate about $1 million and a half in tax benefit to the developer as a result of those donations, which would play into the funding formula and essentially be a payment to the developer. All those things added together gets you to the $15 million that this project, that the property ultimately costs to purchase. At its March 2nd meeting, the county open space board discussed the Highlands' request and voted four-nothing, four to zero, to recommend the allocation of $500,000 in open space funds toward this project. And then lastly, given the complexity of this conservation plan, several funding contingencies are attached to the final funding allocation and resolution, including, prior to closing, number one, an agreement of sale that includes all of the county's funding contingencies. Number two, confirmation that the 19 acres of Lot 4 will be preserved in perpetuity with full public access. Number three, county acceptance of the terms of the conservation easement on the 29 acres of Lot 4 granted to White Marsh Township. Execution and recording of the conservation easements on Lots 3, 4, and 5, as well as documentation that funding and financing adequate to conserve and purchase Lots 3, 4, and 5 is fully secured. Post-closing, we include contingencies to our open space grant of the provision of perpetual public access to the proposed Highlands Trail System, 365 days a year. The preparation of a stewardship plan for the Lot 4's 19 acres within one year of property acquisition. Trails will be developed and maintained for public use within one year of the completion of that plan. And finally, number three, a full funding of a stewardship endowment within one year of completing the stewardship plan that would perpetually fund the care and maintenance of the property. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Let's get a motion on the table. I'll move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby authorize an open space grant of $500,000 to Highlands Historical Society to assist in its fee simple acquisition of a portion of the property located at 7111 Sheaf Lane in White Marsh Township, subject to the funding contingencies. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment or questions?
Yeah, I would just like to add, I've heard from several neighbors in White Marsh Township that live in close proximity to this tract of land. And I know they'll be pleased to see this authorization pass today. And I'm very happy to see it as well because this is the east side of Butler Pike, which that portion of the county is very developed. And this is precious land that we don't see much of these days. And the fact that this was put together so quickly by you and also Mr. France is very impressive. And I appreciate the effort you put into this project and the amount of timeliness you did it in. And the fact that the county is the lowest stakeholder as far as the financial standpoint is also a positive. So this is a great effort, and I'm excited to see it happen.
Okay. Nothing further. We'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. All right. Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Thank you. Ms. Brown, personnel.
Good morning, Commissioners. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioners' Department Personnel List. It's a three-page document dated Tuesday, March 14th, 2023, with a timestamp of 9:00 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for consideration.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the March 16th, 2023 Personnel Presentation as given by Assistant Director of Human Resources Megan Brown and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment or questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Thank you. Advertisement of bids and RFPs, Ms. O'Malley.
Yes. One bid on behalf of assets and infrastructure for a guide rail installation. A successful responder will provide the installation of a guide rail and treat- A successful responder will provide the installation of a guide rail, entryments, bridge connections, and other associated work at six bridges, one culvert, and four roadways in Montgomery County. Contracts will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Two, a bid on behalf of assets and infrastructure for the historic site restoration in Schwanxville. A successful responder will provide the stabilization and preservation of the Grist Mill at Sunrise Mill Historic Site. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Three, RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for food resource providers. These successful responders will provide bulk food and other related products to be supplied to county food pantries. Goods will be distributed to clients in accordance with existing procedures and practice of the food pantries. All product orders will be coordinated through the Monco Anti-Hunger Network. Contracts will be awarded to the highest-rated responders. Four, RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for Medical Countermeasures Consultant. The successful responder will provide consultant services to assist in guiding the Office of Public Health and Department of Public Safety in the development of an emerging pathogens and high consequence infectious disease plan. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. Five, RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for Senior Community Center Services. These successful responders will provide community center services for individuals over the age of sixty, with the intent to be a visible symbol of a community's commitment to support older residents by providing them with easy access to a variety of important services. Contracts will be awarded to the highest-rated responders. Six, RFP on behalf of the Commissioners' Office for Communications Relations Assistance. These successful responders will provide marketing and public relations services to county departments on an as-needed basis. Services may include, but not limited to, digital content creation, press events, and outreach writing, videography, photography, and awareness campaigns. Contracts will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. Seven, RFP on behalf of the Recovery Office for Preliminary Architectural and Engineering Services for the study and documentation of existing community-focused facilities in Norristown. The successful responder will create an inventory of community facility assets in Norristown that includes documentation of operator and location, size and space, and used, unused square footage, type of program provided, preliminary conditional survey. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. Eight, RFP on behalf of the Recovery Office for Community Engagement Facilitation Services. The successful responder will create an inventory of community programs and providers in Norristown that identifies and documents Norristown-focused community partners and services provided by facilitating meetings, discovery processes, and engagement. Facilitates identification and analysis of services sought by community but not available. Establishes program of services to be accommodated in facilities, and assists in determining operating plan for future facilities. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. All RFPs and bids are available on the county's purchasing website at www.moncopa.org/purchasing.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the preceding request for the advertisement of RFPs and bids as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes.
Awards of contract. One contract award, rolling stock vehicles, Whitmoyer Auto Group, Mountjoy, PA, four hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. Contracts provide for two two thousand and twenty-two Chevy Traverse SUVs, three two thousand and twenty-two Chevy Colorado trucks, four two thousand and twenty-two Chevy Silverado trucks, and one four two thousand and twenty-two Escape SUV. Vehicles are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Two, contract award, District Attorney, software, Shadow Dragon Federal LLC of Hoover, Alabama, seventy-one thousand, four hundred dollars. Contract provides for analytical software targeting social media platforms for straw gun purchase investigations. Software is proprietary. Three, contract award, District Attorney, software, Sellbright Incorporated of Parsippany, New Jersey, twenty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars. Contract provides for forensic cellphone software for straw gun purchase investigations. Software is proprietary. Four, contract award, District Attorney, shooter detection system, ShotSpotter Incorporated of Fremont, California, five hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Contract provides for a gunshot detection technology system designed to identify, track, and locate active gunfire with information relayed to law enforcement within sixty seconds. System is sole source. Five, contract award, Information and Technology Solutions, Maintenance and Support, New Era Technologies of Icelandic, New York, six hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty cents. Contract provides for a maintenance and support agreement for the Ovaya Network Infrastructure and Telephone System. Services are available through a PEPPM Cooperative Contract. Contract is for a two-year term. Six, contract award, Information and Technology Solutions Equipment, Lightspeed IS Incorporated of Woodbury, Minnesota, fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. Contract provides for replacement production at host servers with technical support. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Seven, contract award, Public Safety Software, Cloud PCR LLC of Pittsburgh, PA, eighty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Contract provides for a data bridge that will allow for the collection of all emergency medical services patient report data at a regional level. Software is proprietary. Contract is for the period of one year. Eight, contract award, Sheriff, Vehicles, Whitmoyer Auto Group of Mountjoy, PA, three hundred and four thousand, eight hundred dollars. Contract provides for one two thousand and twenty-three Ford Police Interceptor Utility Vehicle, one two thousand and twenty-three Chevy Silverado twenty-five hundred HD Truck, one two thousand and twenty-three Ford Transit one fifty Cargo Van, one two thousand and twenty Ford Transit Connect Handicap Van. Vehicles are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Nine, contract award, Sheriff, Specialty Hearing Protection Equipment, DISCO thirty-two Tactical Antennas LLC of Southern Pines, North Carolina, fifty-four thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and six cents. Contract provides for tactical hearing protection headsets for the Sheriff's Emergency Response Team and the Bomb Disposal Unit. Specification six four nine seven was viewed by twenty-five providers with two responses received. Contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Ten, contract award, Tax Claim, Tax Notification Printing and Mailing Services, Midwest Presort Mailing Services Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Contract provides for printing and mailing delinquent tax notifications. RFP twenty-two seventy was viewed by nineteen providers with three responses. Contract is for a period of two years with three optional annual renewal terms. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Eleven, contract renewal, Assets and Infrastructure Equipment Rental, multiple providers, not to exceed two million, two hundred thousand dollars. Contract provides for equipment rentals for road and trail maintenance. This is the first available renewal term with no renewal terms remaining as per specification six four six five. Awarded responders, TNT Contracting Incorporated of Fairview Village, PA, Floyd G. Hirsch Incorporated of Green Lane, PA, Strauss Landscaping Incorporated of Schwanxville, PA, Flyway Exploding Incorporated of Mountjoy, PA. Twelve, contract renewals, Planning Commission Appraisal Services, multiple providers. Contract provides for real estate appraisal services to the county on an as-needed basis. This is the first of four optional annual renewal terms as per RFP twenty-one forty-four. Awarded providers are Indian Valley Appraisal Company of Soderton, PA, Everly Appraisal Services LLC of East Earl, PA. Thirteen, contract amendment, Planning Commission, Ridge Pike Improvement Project Engineering Supplement, Rommel Klepper &amp; Call, LLP, of King of Precious, PA, four million, five hundred and ninety-six thousand, seventy-five dollars and seventy-one cents. Original contract approved by PennDOT, provided for preliminary design and engineering services for Ridge Pike Improvement Project from Harmon Road to Crescent Avenue in Plymouth and White Marsh Township. Amendment provides for final design to include engineering of the roadway, structures, utilities, stormwater facilities, retaining walls, as well as right-of-way negotiations and public involvement. Amendment also provides for an extension of time for project completion through September twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-three. Fourteen, contract amendment, Assets and Infrastructure Road Program, Allen Myers LP of Orsester, PA, seventeen thousand, sixteen dollars. Original contract provided for the scheduled removal and replacement of roadway pavement from Montgomery County-owned roadways for the twenty-two, twenty-three term as per specification six four seven three. Amendment provides for costs associated with the temporary rights-to-enter railway crossing allowance with CSX transportation for the purposes of milling and paving to the railroad. Fifteen, contract amendment, Planning Commission Construction Management Services for the Chester Valley Trail Project, JBC Associates Incorporated of Opera Mary, PA, sixty thousand dollars. Original contract provided for construction management and inspection services for the full construction phase of the Chester Valley Trail Project. Amendment provides for services to address a required redesign of the trail location and related stormwater management facilities within the PICO Energy Corridor portion of the project area and an extension of the duration of the contract through December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three. Sixteen, contract amendment, Planning Commission Construction Services for the Chester Valley Trail Project, Allen A. Myers LP of Orsester, PA, one million, eight hundred and three thousand and fifty-two dollars. Original contract provided for the construction of the Chester Valley Trail. Amendment provides for construction requirements related to a major redesign of the trail location and related stormwater management facilities within the PICO Energy Corridor portion of the project area. Seventeen, reimbursement agreement, Planning Commission, Ridge Pike Improvement Project, PennDOT, nine hundred thousand dollars. Authorization request for an agreement between PennDOT and Montgomery County provides a funding agreement reimbursing the county for the Ridge Pike Improvement Project, Section C, Harmon Road to Crescent Avenue in Plymouth and White Marsh Townships. Agreement allows for the reimbursement to the county for right-of-way negotiation costs. Reimbursement agreement provides for eighty percent reimbursement to the county. There's one contract, nine contract renewals, and nine amendments for Health and Human Services, providers and services are listed at the end of the agenda and the back of the room.
I'll make a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. You name any water, are you good?
I'm good. Thank you.
Next up, emergency procurement for One Montgomery Plaza. Contract award, Assets and Infrastructure, Emergency HVAC Replacement for Information and Technology Solutions Computer Room. CM Three Building Solutions of Fort Washington, PA, twenty-six thousand dollars. Contract provides for installation of two ductless split systems for computer room at One Montgomery Plaza required due to system failure. Two, contract award, Assets and Infrastructure, Emergency Elevator Repairs, Union Electric Contracting Company of Fort Washington, PA, twenty-eight thousand, sixty-four dollars and seventy-one cents. Contract provides for the emergency repairs to the Main Street Parking Garage elevator due to a PICO outage.
I'll move that the county, motion by the county commissioners that an actual emergency existed as defined by Section eighteen oh two B of the county code, thereby permitting the county in Montgomery through its chief clerk, chief operating officer, to enter into such contracts without meeting the requirements of Section eighteen oh two of the county code, as may be required to restore HVAC service at the county-owned One Montgomery Plaza Building, eighth-floor computer room in Norristown, and separately to restore and maintain elevator service at the county-owned Main Street Parking Garage, also in Norristown. Be it further resolved that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to enter into a contract with CM Three Building Solutions of Fort Washington, PA, to restore HVAC service at the county-owned One Montgomery Plaza Building, eighth-floor computer room in Norristown, at a cost of twenty-six thousand dollars. And be it further resolved that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to enter into a contract with Union Electric Contracting Company of Fort Washington, PA, to restore and maintain elevator service at the county-owned Main Street Parking Garage in Norristown, at a cost of twenty-eight thousand dollars, sixty-four, twenty-eight thousand, sixty-four dollars and seventy-one cents. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing nine, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes.
Contract award, Assets and Infrastructure, Major Construction Projects. One, contract amendment, General Construction, One Montgomery Plaza Electrical System, TN Ward Company of Ardmore, PA, one thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-six cents. Original contract provides general construction services for the construction of a new electrical infrastructure system in One Montgomery Plaza. Amendment provides for spray-on fireproofing patchwork required in Level P2 of the One Montgomery Plaza garage. Two, contract amendment, Electrical Construction, Hobbs &amp; Company Incorporated of Willow Grove, PA, no cost. Original contract provided electrical services for the construction of a new electrical infrastructure system in One Montgomery Plaza. Amendment allows for additional time to complete project due to longer-than-expected equipment lead times.
I'll make a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment?
Yes, I oppose the original contracts for both of these, so I will also be opposing today the contract amendments.
Okay. Are there any other negative votes? All right, motion passes, two to one. Commissioner Gale is, no. Finally, awards of contract, Southeast PA Regional Task Force.
Yes. One contract award, Law Enforcement Training for Bucks County, Northwestern Center for Public Safety of Evanston, Illinois, twenty-four thousand, two hundred dollars. Contract provides for a ten-week intensive police management and leadership program for Bucks County Senior Command Law Enforcement Employees. Training is proprietary.
I'll make a motion to approve the preceding award of contract on behalf of the Southeast PA Regional Task Force as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Do we have any closing commissioner comments? All right, hearing none, I will make a motion to adjourn the March sixteenth meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, also announcing that our next meeting will be on April sixth. I'm announcing that first. Now I'm making a motion to adjourn the March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned. We will move into Salary Board. Mr. Landauer will be joining us on behalf of Controller Sanchez. Do we have any public comment on Salary Board? Okay.
Good morning, members of Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It's a three-page document dated Tuesday, March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, with a timestamp of nine o'clock a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Salary Board presentation as given by Assistant Director of Human Resources, Megan Brown, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Winder, second by Mr. Landauer. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? All right, motion passes. And I believe we had someone who's late for public comment, but since she won't be here next time, we will let her, we will let her approach and.
My apologies, Commissioner.
No problem. We were moving quick.
Good morning, my name is Jessica Schneider. I live in New Hanover Township, but I'm also, was on the Salary Board this morning to resign from my position after eight years as the grant administrator for the county. So I just wanted to thank you very much, all of the commissioners, and Lee and Barbara, for this opportunity. After working in nonprofits for seventeen years, I would highly encourage anyone to consider working for local government. It's been an incredible opportunity for me. It's changed the trajectory of my career. I really appreciate, shout-out to Ori Monson for giving me a shot eight years ago, and especially to Dean Dorton, who's been a pleasure to work for for the last seven years. So I just want to encourage people to consider local government, no matter where you are in your career. And this wasn't an easy decision, and while I do feel slightly like a traitor, I, I, I hope to continue to work with you in any way that I can at my new position, working for the state, and I'm only a text or a phone call away, so thank you very much.
So Ms. Schneider, you are not a traitor. You are always part of the Montgomery County family. We thank you for your seven years of service. I will personally miss seeing you on the eighth floor. You will not be replaced there. We might get somebody, but that will never replace you, and their beef barley soup certainly will not be as good either. So Godspeed, and thank you for all your work.
Yes, thank you. Thanks.
Wish you all the best.
Thanks.
Thank you for your service in the county.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jess.
All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn the March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Landauer. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned. Meeting is adjourned.